We have video? I don't know where to be.
Okay, we should be good. Don't hold me to that. We should be good.
Okay.
Things good to go.
Okay. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lincoln.
Aye.
Trustee Linfield.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Does any member of the board have anything to disclose or any conflict of interest regarding the agenda?
Yeah.
I'd like to recuse myself from the consideration of the extension of the Scale Next contract due to the appearance of impropriety as they are personal friends.
Okay. Anyone else want to say?
I'm sorry, Lily, what was that? Because why?
The owners of Canada, the friends of mine, so yeah. Because of the appearance of impropriety, I will accuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
I do not have anything.
I do not have anything.
And I don't have anything. Okay, with that being said, do you want to give us list notes of?
Sure, since I can print the full version.
Opening, compliance, certification.
If anybody wants to speak to the board, please give your name and address if you need to legally. I guess everybody be cordial to everybody and we'll go from there. And really be insurance.
Yeah, and this is a special meeting that has been called. So part of it's kind of a little bit of a workshop and also just to take care of some things that have been ongoing that are coming back to the board. So we'd like to have a hard stop by 5:30 this evening. I have a commitment, Dorothea has one as well. I'm sure everybody else.
Well, there you go. Now I don't even have to say it.
No.
Yeah, every four six. So it's good.
Like keep it moving. That's the whole point here.
Just stay focused, everyone.
Okay, yeah, no, we're just going to keep things moving. So with that being said, the first item up is our review of the GPI contract.
I'm Scott Harper, your engineer. Somebody who hasn't met me yet, so I thought I would introduce myself.
Scott, nice to meet you.
Welcome. I think I'm your lawyer, so I'd introduce Tim Fearler to my right, who is a traffic engineer who his company submitted response to our RFP for work to be done, design work and construction administration relative to South Street, Wood Street, and Southern Street. Those are all three streets that Zach can probably tell you are have been on the radar for quite some time for improvements. And actually, in all my years in being in this position, most of the work that we've ever done on village streets has been just surface repairs largely. As Zach and I say back and forth quite often, just band-aid approaches to things that really needed more attention. That's what brought us to the point of putting out the RFP to find consultant out there that could take on the project and give us a real good service and get us on a formula or a recipe for getting the streets done in a productive, systematic, and intelligent way. So Tim has the background in street engineering and design. I first met him when he was with the city of Rochester. After the city of Rochester, he moved on to Monroe County where he was the director of transportation. He's now a consultant with GPI and I guess I'll turn it over to you, Tim.
Yes, so.
You guys can come up and sit and talk to it, you know. Yeah, I mean, just make yourselves comfortable.
Look at these three car parks.
Pull chairs around, whatever you need to do. Yeah, just because, you know, it's just us chickens.
More of our job, Mark.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So, well, thank you for having us. I'm here today to entertain some questions that you may have. As you may have seen and as part of our submittals, we did respond to the RFP and submitted that on February 16th. And since then, there has been multiple conversations, I'll say, with both Zach and Scott and some other folks regarding some things that were not noted in the RFP and some additional thoughts and ideas that had come up after that. In response to that, we have prepared some additional costs that will reflect those additional services. And I'm here, and I'm not going to present anything, but I think everyone has seen it. If you have any questions on it or want any clarifications, I'd be happy to address those. We are, we have already done a little bit of work after this, got some area photography going.
Oh, you did the drone?
That just for the use of cane, which was helpful. We have not used it, we have not done anything with it, we have not engaged in getting a contract on this yet. However, we are here to kind of keep this moving forward, address any comments, concerns, or questions that you may have. This is just responding to an RFP. There has been no technical work done in the field or research or anything else like that that I can delve into at this point. But if you'd like some clarification or some other things, I'd be happy to address it. So with that out, yeah.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you for your forbearance too, because I know you want me to. You know, this has been so much going on and we didn't want to subject you to a five-and-a-half-hour marathon meeting. So, yeah, with that being said, I know the board's had the contract, you had a chance to look through things. And obviously, Scott, if you want to jump in on anything as well, but are there any additional questions from the board?
So simplistically, if we can make that, my understanding is that this $93,000 was the original quote back in February. And then this second page with the additional $88,000 is the new, or the new projects? Or am I not?
It was additional scope that was added. The initial response to the RFP was simply, it was, I won't say brief, but it was, didn't have a lot of content. It was reflective of a simple milling and resurfacing and paving of those three streets.
Okay.
It also included the handicap ramp work that was part of, I think there's 15 of them, which requires some technical survey, right-of-way determinations. It's very critical that the ramp work be done within the right-of-way. In order to verify that, that requires some survey. We are in a village environment, so there's a lot that's gone on over the years with that. There's a lot of environmental and things like that that need to be done. As far as that, that we're going to affect the environment, but it has to be determined that we're not going to through the proper channel. So that was the baseline. After we submitted that, we had some meetings regarding drainage on Wood that was brought up, some ideas of widening the sidewalk and what we could do with maybe a curb there to enhance some of both the drainage and pedestrian there. And then also in Southern, the entire storm sewer system wasn't somewhat in question. And the thought was to do some further videotaping of that, do a full-blown survey, decide what would need to be done rather than just simply milling and paving. So the efforts to do that were included in that, which resulted in obviously an additional cost for those services.
So then, you know, just for clarification, so we all understand, traditionally, these streets have really just had just kind of milling and paving, you know, just basic stuff.
Mostly successive overlays.
As we refer to as the asphalt sandwich?
Yeah, and I think with the exception of South, it must be milled periodically. But for many of the village streets, they're just overlays of pavement and kind of overlays. I don't know, I think Wood may be one of those where if there wasn't a curb, then you can't find it anymore because the road is elevated.
It's all just hitting now at street level. Because I see people sometimes just parking on Wood Street right on the sidewalk. I've seen that happen because it's just all. And also it's created some of the drainage issues that we need to address.
Right, we've had issues where, for example, St. Louis Church approached us, put a catch base in their lawn area because the street drainage system could not take the drainage away because the street was so high now. And so I remember working with Jeff on that and we created a legal possibility for them to put in a catch base and connect it into the village street. So this is a problem that is, you know, not going away. In fact, it's growing with every successive overlay. One of the streets, I guess, South Street, and I think Southern Street must be milled, right?
Yes.
So that issue doesn't necessarily apply to them, but it does perhaps apply to Wood. And it does apply to many others, such as Rand next to St. Louis. And most recently, we did Barrow Street over by the Pickle Works building. And that was, that was a short section of the street, but we were really only able to do a surface treatment on that, not a whole lot of lawn.
Yeah, that was like seven years ago?
Yeah, so the village is in a real predicament, I would say, in terms of aging infrastructure within the streets. And having sort of not really engaged in a full-blown effort to do what Tim is proposing for these initial three streets.
So then, you know, because we're looking at significant costs, but what we're doing is really kind of drilling deeper. We're really doing this correctly. We're really going to be going in and getting the correct engineering, the correct layout, correcting the sidewalk issues, all of that going forward. So we do this and then say we do, you know, the South and Wood. How long does that last? Like what's the long-term?
Longevity?
Yeah, longevity of something like that, if we're doing something so large.
Well, if you get the drainage put back into shape and you can then grade it off the way you want and you get things functioning properly, Zach can then take it over to more of a normal maintenance mode. And then there are a variety of treatments that you can put on there that are very thin. You don't have to take that inch and a half off. Typically, in the seven-to-nine-year range, you could do either surface treatment, micro pave, something like that where the gutters are.
Right.
You can easily get to an 18-to-22-year milling and paving cycle with the right interim treatments.
Okay.
Part of that is building it right and having the adequate section. They don't look to me, as I've driven them and walked them a little bit, that there's, you know, significant base failure. They're built to a standard and they're holding up well. But those successive overlays and getting things graded back in and put back the way you'd like it, then you can put it back to a normal maintenance, which.
Right, so there's less maintenance, less money being spent over and over again.
Yeah, lower cost treatments.
Okay, that's where I'm sort of going with this, and it's roughly an 18-to-22-year span.
Yeah, if you do a treatment in the seven-to-nine-year window before, that'll get you probably another seven years. You can do that twice.
Okay.
And then by the time you've done that, then it's time to take some of that back off and get back to where you were started. So I've been successful in many cases of an 18-to-20-year cycle before it needs to be milled.
Well, that's good to know, just in terms of the cost and really what we're getting back on.
All roads come out the same.
Yeah.
Shade and things like that can have a detrimental effect on the long-term payments. But keeping them sealed up is pretty critical.
And then my understanding as well is that South Street was originally a county road. So it's really, you were saying, has a very solid.
Yeah, everything that I can see that I inspected, the drainage, the source, it's all built to a higher standard than the rest of the villages.
Okay. No, you know, this is all good information. Yeah, Justin?
So I guess I'd like to understand how much of this additional budget is related to the different streets? I don't really have that understanding so far. But one of my, maybe a slightly easier question is, is what we're talking about on Wood Street a chip sealing or is this something else?
Wood Street, at this point, with the drainage issues that we're seeing, is to bring it back down to a level where we're not having a lot of water, going back into the private properties and correct the drainage situation.
So it's quite a bit.
A deeper dive into it.
Yeah, there's a lot more material being removed on the chip seal.
Yeah, just to go off of Tim's point, we're basically at that, you know, over 21-year point where we've continually added to those roads. We have to bring it back down to a level it shouldn't be at this point. So we're a let's start.
Yeah, we all see it whenever there's a rain, you see it down there, you know, there's storms out late.
Yes, well, what comes to my mind is when dealing with Wood Street is then what happens with the run-up as far as Bowton, because we know that Bowton is.
So Bowton is a situation where it wasn't done correctly when it was last milled and paved in 2012 or 2013. And that's going to have to be addressed as well. And we're looking at Bowton, Austin, and Jackson at the same time because everything kind of flows together.
Yeah, I was going to say you can.
Yeah, we all can.
One without the other.
And since we paved Bowton, we've had enough of the drainage issues on that road. You know, between them, we do all the aprids, which now kind of have a funny run to them, the driveway aprids because of it. You know, we've kind of, I don't know how to say it properly, but we've responded to doing a road by doing everything else wrong because of it. We have to bring it back to a lower grade so everything is functional, I suppose.
Yeah, Justin.
So I guess this is good technical information about the streets and it all really makes sense. I guess my concern is that the original purpose of this meeting, as I understood it, was to get a better feel for the longer-term capital plans. We don't have a capital plan at this. We have an inventory of things like streets, which are basically assessing the condition, the next needed steps. It doesn't really drill into the cost to do those, as I can see at a high level. So while all this stuff is really great, I think the bigger issue that we're trying to address is not just doing this piecemeal, but ensuring that going forward, we have a proper plan to do things the right way. And even when I look at the most up-to-date spreadsheet that was just sent around recently, Wood Street is listed as in good condition. And it's saying the chip sealing is the next recommended treatment in 2023. And so even according to the most up-to-date inventory, it doesn't seem like we have a great understanding of what's actually in the five-year plan and when that has to get done. So that's basically my concern, is that I'd like to really have a more specific list of these items, what work needs to be done, about how much they're going to cost, and what we're looking at over the next five years to make sure that we don't do a bunch of things that are right and good to have here. But in doing so, preclude ourselves from doing other projects that need to get down the road. And I think even just one more point beyond that, the budget that we're looking at for the full scope of work here is somewhere over 10% of our annual revenue, I believe. And that's just for the planning on these three streets. So all this stuff is great, this is very informative and very helpful as a board member. I don't feel like I can really support this entirely right now because I want to make sure that we've got better fundamentals in place before we take these next steps.
All right, well, the reason why we're revisiting this in 2023 was because we weren't able to do it 2017 when it was a $75,000, $80,000 project.
And so that was never done in 2017?
And Wood Street, following.
Six years later?
Yeah, following the process of building a paving and surface treatments, technically, it would be up for a chip sealing. But because of the drainage issues that we're having, we're looking at tackling that at the same time as we're doing South Street because we had an opportunity, not necessarily because we have to because of the road surface. But anything that we do to the road surface at this point by building it up is just going to exacerbate the drainage issues that we have on the road, so.
So what we're looking at now, based on what I'm hearing, is this is a map, a guide, to solve the problem once and for all for the next 20 years roughly? Is that what I'm hearing?
And it's a starting point relative to the inventory. I mean, I've been affiliated with the village for quite some time. I've seen many, many inventories over the years. And, you know, it's been somewhat of an academic exercise because the inventory gets done, but the work doesn't. So my observation of this, and my opinion, if it matters, is that you have, what we've created here is a starting point. We've got three streets that we're focusing in on, which I think will serve as a great prototype for other streets to follow. I think you might be counterproductive if you decided to initiate a village inventory again and try to update it. I think you would use up time. And I think you would detract from the momentum that we've gained so far from doing what we've done.
Can I ask, what happened? So you said this should have been done in 2017? Is that right?
South Street was first proposed.
So what's happened since then? Like what happened? Why didn't we do it? What happened?
Funding wasn't available.
Okay, so funding, right? Okay, so we have funding issues. We've got to figure out how we're going to fund, not just this, but, you know, Dorothea's got a whole list of stuff on the building. I mean, this is only my third meeting and I'm telling you, I was telling Justin, I feel like everybody's got their hand out. We only have so much money that we can spend. And I think that the big picture is we've got to see where we're going to spend our money. We can't just all throw, you know, $120,000 into this great, I mean, it's a great project and I think we need it. But what happens after we give that money to this project? And then we get another $20,000 project that we need to do. So that's what Justin's saying, we need to see the big picture. And we need to plug this in because it's very needed and I totally understand. And yes, we want to do things right. But then let's take a look at DPW stuff as well and let's take a look at the building stuff. And we need to take a look at the big picture. And right now, I don't have a big picture. And you're saying that we did surveys in the past? Has anybody seen any of those surveys?
There have been inventories in the past. And I mean, I've spoken with Frank DeLucio when he was the person with whom I was dealing. And prior to that, it was Steve Maddox. And we would, you know, talk about, we're the DPW super at the time, the general master plan, if you will. But it does, it comes down to funding, which is another reason why we're here. Because I think in our initial discussions, we realized that this is a large amount of money in addition to the construction costs. And so our discussions have been along the lines of bonding, borrowing the money in order to do it, to get it done, because it has a certain level of importance. I agree with DPW and many other issues that surround the village. Money is a big issue and the village doesn't seem to have a lot of it. So bonding is an alternative.
And that's something we obviously are looking at. Yes, Justin?
So Scott, I totally agree with you that another inventory is not going to be productive. And that's why I'm specifically recommending something that is not another inventory, but which is a capital plan. So it's actually in the next five years, these are the things that we want to get done and here's a ballpark price for it. So there's an example spreadsheet, and I think it's Appendix E of the New York State Comptroller's Guide on New York State Long-Term Capital Planning. That's the reason that we didn't get this done in 2017. That's the reason that we're having trouble figuring all this out right now. And I'd really like to get back to that. And ultimately, whether we bond them to a bond, those things should also be a part of that plan. It's a good part of the plan, it's a good idea. But we need to have that part of the picture to make sure that we've got the roads adequately addressed so that, you know, we're looking at just under a couple hundred thousand dollars here just for the planning. And we still don't have a great idea of, you know, how much of that actual work is going to fit into, what kind of a bond, and what else do we need to tuck in with that?
I'd like to just interject something. I think that to frame this, that in 2017, this project didn't get done for the $80,000 was because there wasn't a capital plan, I don't think is maybe an accurate reflection of kind of where we are. Because I think, you're right, Lisa, all the projects that we're seeing, whether it's for Villitol, for DPW, for our infrastructure, for our streets, for everything, so many of these have been deferred for years. Am I correct? I mean, you know, you know this, Lily, you've been on the board. They've been deferred for years. This isn't anything new. So, you know, this was something that came up already in the schedule, capital plan or not. We knew it needed to be done, period. And the money wasn't there because the funds were directed elsewhere. So we are now looking, I think, at the culmination of things that have been deferred in many different areas of our village, you know, not just one street or the other or this or that. I think we're really, that's why we're kind of going, oh, wow, we have a lot on our plate, you know? Because going through all this, a lot of this hasn't been addressed, whether it's DPW equipment schedule that has had been in place that we haven't been able to affect at all. So I think there's sort of a larger overarching view of this and of all the projects, not just, you know, this particular one. Because this was identified, it was supposed to be in the hopper. It was supposed to go at eighty-some thousand, and here we are, period, you know? And we, yeah, Lily.
Thank you. I know, it says review. Were you contemplating a vote at this time? There's a reason I'm asking.
We can review, we can vote. I mean, here we are. I mean, it just depends what the board.
The reason I ask is I wonder if it might put us in a better position to make a decision once we have gone over item number three, which is the multi-year planning.
And bring it back.
And then bring it back.
Bring it back.
We'll see where it fits in the queue.
Yeah.
Just one other comment about this. I think we absolutely do need a good inventory in place. And it's possible that this road has been deferred for quite a while, which makes me concerned that of the roads that we're looking at right now, only one of those has a fair slash poor rating. There are other roads in the village that have poor ratings, according to our own inventory, and they're not being addressed in the scope. So maybe this road does need this work, and this is the most important thing to spend our money on, but according to our own inventory of roads, we're not even addressing what the highest priority is if we're just looking at condition.
Well, do you want to speak to the ratings and how that works and why we are where we are?
Well, yeah, because we have not been able to follow a schedule. So trying to get one road done while another one deteriorates, sometimes it deteriorates faster than others. Can't really predict that, but it doesn't change the fact that we're still trying to get one road done. It hasn't for six years.
Because, I mean, because South was always identified. Am I correct? I mean, that was something that was shared with the board repeatedly over years.
Well, South has the handicap ramps, which are another motivation for this project. And the village has received a grant for $100,000 towards that work. That's another reason why we zeroed in on these streets.
Yeah, they're not in compliance.
But we don't want to, I mean, I don't think the village wants to give up $100,000 grant if someone's willing to do that amount of money. And one other factor too is that using any public funds or state funds grants, you have to have the project on to idiot compliance.
No matter what, yeah, no matter what, no matter what road.
No matter what it is by using that amount of money.
Right.
Which we don't have.
Right, yeah.
So thanks for coming in. So I know we have approved the $93,000. At, what was it, two meetings ago, three meetings ago? So the additional work, in my mind, the way I think about it is, what amount of this work, if we don't do, can we not do later? Or runs the risk of the expenses incurred, as in fixing the roads? Would we possibly then need to disassemble and reassemble if something goes wrong with the work that we're doing, right? So the crux of this is, can we do everything that we originally decided to do? And then something, for example, like the utility mapping or the storm sewer evaluation? Do those need to be done now? Or can we do them later at similar cost? I mean, minus inflation, like assume inflation is not, everything goes up with inflation, right? So prioritizing items, whatever it is you prioritize, money is increasing in, you know, cost every year. So whether or not it's this, the village, or anything else. So what I'm trying to figure out is, of these additional costs, how much can we just simply do later when we go to move on, actually deciding what is going to get worked on or Southern's going to get worked on? See what I'm saying? Like geotechnical cores and storm sewer video. If we don't do that and we do all the work that we were planning on doing with the bond, are we at risk of that work being, paying it twice?
Not necessarily. The idea of the geotechnical work was to determine both how much pavement section was there to work with, to see if you can just remove some and get back there without removal. That was to give good fundamental basics to a recommendation, particularly for Southern. The South, the South Street and Wood Street, the South in particular, that's pretty straightforward, okay? And none of the extra work was really aimed at South Street. The additional work in the scope was primarily Southern, the drainage evaluation, geotechnical, the curbing, which is significantly deteriorated. If you just go and mill and pave it, you don't touch any of the curbs. which is significantly deteriorated. If you just go mill and pave it, you don't touch any of the curbs and.
This this year, this first part was just for a mill and pave?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And if we do the mill and pave using this, how much additional cost would if we go in and we look at the core and do it right and bury it, you know, bring it all down? How much does that add to the cost of the project?
It wouldn't add to the costs of that particular. On Sutherland it would not, it would not. But you would have milled and paved the road and why would you want to go and take that off and start doing the curbs after the fact?
Right. So you would only do the curb after you totally bring it down? Yeah, if you're going to build and pave, you're going to want to do the curbs.
Yep.
Essentially.
Yes. If you're going to do some, I wouldn't suggest that either do them all or nothing.
And this original part of the contract was to do what, Sutherland?
Just a straight forward. It was limited to just the milling and paving?
Yeah.
And I think one one crosswalk.
And and the and the ramps, right?
Yeah, there was only one ramp.
Okay, so then this additional work would have allowed us to do what?
To identify if there's storm sewer issues, both condition and capacity. Address the grades if you come want to replace the curb. You may be able to build right on top of it and not have to take that all off because the three loans are quite steep. You got a lot of trees there. You might be, but that affects everyone's driveway apron. And now you have to take all them out and tie everyone back. This was simply mill it, pave it, tie the driveways in.
Yeah.
And I say get it home in life, so to speak.
This work could be done later.
It could be, but you probably wouldn't want to for.
How many years?
Till your next building and paving cycle.
Till your next milling and paving.
Yeah, why would you uh
Right.
disturb that new pavement and talk about.
We're talking about seven years?
No, I'd be talking more like twenty.
So the same mill and pave is.
Yeah, I mean to before you'd be talking about filling and paving it or an overlay or whatever the treatment may be. The seven years was you know, simple micro paving like sealing your driveway.
Okay.
Surface treat, oil and stone, something like that.
But this this is for the this engineer works for the full mill and pave to get us twenty years out of Sutherland.
The initial mill and pave was just simply straightforward milling paving of the three roads and ramps.
Are there any safety hazards that weren't being addressed in the first part of the contract?
I don't know of any safety problems that we were trying to address other than the pedestrian.
Crosswalks. Which we're addressing in the first part of the contract.
As for accidents, we haven't looked at anything like that.
Yeah.
I'm assuming, um given the village nature of the road, relatively low volumes in the grand scheme of things, that accidents are not a huge problem.
Right. What about so let's just.
Milling typically doesn't correct those kind of problems anyway, right? Without geometrics and widening and things like that.
So so my my big concern is that we issue a bond for seven hundred and fifty thousand plus. We do this work and then we have something break that requires us to go in and redo it all at cost again, right? Is there anything that this second part of the um project, whether or not it's wood or Sutherland, should absolutely be done before a mill and paving that we've identified in the first section?
I would defer to Zach on that. One thing would be the storm sewer evaluation. We're going to have a camera down there to see if the pipes are completely rotted out because as soon as you mill and pave and put vibratory and then it collapses, a repair is going to take up the road.
Okay, so that's something.
It's easy to pave things over and then wonder why it gets cut later.
Scanx usually does that for us, right? But in this case, you're doing that work? Is that how that?
We were, they they have a contract. We could piggyback on that one, but we part of the cost was to reimburse the vendor. It's not not a service that we provide.
Okay, so then we could work with our own scanx. Okay. And then this was in B. It was preliminary design alternatives, utility mapping, storm sewer evaluation on Sutherland and Wood. The utility mapping, and and that was all sort of lumped together, so it's hard to piece out what the cost would be for Scanx to go and do that work um for the storm sewer. But utility mapping, is that something that if it doesn't get done? It's okay? Like we haven't had that on Sutherland for a long time, right?
Mm hmm. That was part of the preliminary engineering to arrive at. If you're going to start to modify the storm sewer system, you want to know where the utilities are.
Right.
You want to be able to talk intelligently with them based on some good mapping. And if there's some modifications that need to be made, what are the impacts of that? If you're not going to do any storm sewer work.
Yeah.
And you know you can you can go with a broad brush mapping of them at a high level. And you're only going down, still have to get stakeouts numbers, but an inch and a half isn't going to disturb when you start to talk about curbs.
Right.
And digging down and putting in the curbs and aprons, then you need to.
Then you need, right, then you need all the.
All the hustler runs and everything on the map.
So the real question is, is are we bringing, are we making a decision to bring Sutherland now up to the sort of preeminent design style with all the current engineering and all the work on the curbs, right? Do all this work and this would be, to your point Scott, the model of how we move forward, right? It's not necessarily to, just in your comment, is this the immediate first step of where we want to spend another hundred thousand, right? Which is a good amount of money for then what we have to add on to the cost of the actual project itself, right? We're going to be easily pushing over a million bucks, I would think, when all this is set up. And we've been talking about a bond under a million dollars.
Yeah.
Right? So as I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking let's, I don't know if we just call Scanx and say, let's get the things done with the storm sewer, right? To see if there's structural challenges, things that we need to improve. If there are, then maybe we move the next step to utility mapping. If things start to underneath it all, and Scott held me out because I'm like not the engineer, but if things start to break down a little bit underneath it when you're doing this work, maybe we have to go to the next step, right, of more effort into this particular street. But if that comes back on the sewer system and it says, yeah, it looks pretty good, it'll be it'll be good for another twenty years. And maybe it needs a coating or something.
I think with respect to Sutherland, you can certainly do that. I I think Tim um is with these particular streets, we're we're speaking about a recipe, I guess, that both Tim and I have seen that's effective and and it's systematic and and we're just going through and doing the utility mapping and checking things out. And maybe as part of taking the pulse, so to speak, of the of the street, we learned that the storm sewer is excellent. We don't have to do that. Well, in which case, you know, the the design doesn't have to go into super detail on that and and items are adjusted, including the design fee. But I think, you know, if you're in the consultant seat and you're proposing something to the municipality, you want to give them the complete picture of what you need to do. With the understanding that, you know, maybe everything is really in good shape, although we haven't found that to be the case. Um and we find a lot of rotted CMP storm sewer, but um Tim's approach is is really the complete approach. And and I hear what you're saying. And and yeah, if you go in and you check this and that looks okay, then maybe you don't have to do this. But I don't think you know until you start the project with the full scope of your knowledge being the prime directive. And and for example, we've gotten in the streets, so when I was working with Tim in the city of Rochester, you know, where the city of Rochester, the water department has has a water main that goes through the street. And that water main is is aged out. And that water main has to come out. That means we're doing a full rebuild of that street. If you don't check in with city water, if you don't check in with your utility providers, find out what the age of their utilities are, map those utilities, figure out where they are relative to the storm sewer, relative to the pavement. Then you don't know when you can't tell your client with confidence what it's going to cost and how much time it's going to take.
I have a quick question. Enter seat there. I'm a nurse, so I'm going to look at this as symptoms.
Okay.
If we had symptoms here to warrant us being worried that we had to go in, I I'm just, you know, people always say, why don't we just get a full body CAT scan of everybody? You know, spend a hundred thousand dollars and then we'll find out exactly what's happening. Are there symptoms that make us suspicious about spending this money to look into this? The second step?
I can't answer that. That was.
What are the symptoms?
He wants a CAT scan.
Yeah, CAT scan all the streets, but like I went out with symptoms.
Probably curves for all. Um the drainage system we know is is compromised at this point. We've rebuilt many catch basins on the road already. Given that we've had issues with sinkholes forming on other streets, Lincoln and Washington, that was designed around the same time that we know that the corrugated metal pipe that plums those catch basins are probably compromised as well. So it's only a matter of time until we have a sinkhole that opens up on Sutherland to just assume that the pipe is proud. While you're working on the road, it just makes sense to get everything that's on the need to sort it out. So when the surface is new, you're not digging it back up to go back on. So it's just the right timing to do it. It's old.
Okay, so I'm going to I'm going to continue the medical analogy.
Okay, good.
So if you're doing the surgery while you're in there, get the gallbladder too?
Well, you do it. So yeah, that's it.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking, I I'm trying to understand it all. Or you know, and you raised some really good points too. It's like what maybe what is the less lesser amount that we could do regarding Sutherland? Because that's sort of the add-on. You know, we've been looking at Southern Wood to bring it to shovel ready? Because if there is additional funding, maybe that we can get through the state or you know, then we can't, you have to be nimble. You have to say, yep, we're ready to go. As opposed to, no, we have to go get the study and bring it back, you know? So I'm wondering if there's a some middle.
So there after, um Tim, go ahead. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things.
Justin.
Justin and you brought up two things. Between the first proposal and the second proposal, I won't say it's apples and oranges, but there's some key differences there. The first proposal was simple bare bones delivery of a mill and fill, planometrics, no, not a lot of survey, only to get these ramps. I leave it at that. The second proposal, which included more forensics, so to speak, was that same deliverable for South and Wood with some enhancements on Wood. And Wood is very sure it's not going to get too hot back there. I mean, you can't, it's four hundred feet long or whatever. It's not. You can't do a lot with that and there's only so much room to to add or subtract. Sutherland, on the other hand, we decided, okay, rather than just blindly going and just milling and paving this, we'll do the preliminary engineering phase, which provides both the subsurface, looking at that, comes up with some alternatives, estimates them well, puts a good cost to them and arrives at a sound engineering based decision rather than just a throw an inch and a half of pavement on it and walk away.
And that will last indefinitely. All that work will last indefinitely.
The the preliminary engineering doesn't change the pavement section. The sewers sewers aren't going to get better unless they get worked on. Um you've done a little bit of terrain. You can see how things might fit. You can estimate how they, you want the curbs to, right now they go into everybody's apron. Do you want that like that? Do you want to go with a conventional? Tree protection, different things, and estimate it well, which gets to Justin's point of then when you program that in a later year, whether it's twenty four, five or six, you have a good number. And the number isn't like, well, we picked one and now we have to build it to that number. And things can get very costly during construction when you have a sloppy set of drawings. And that's not the position that neither GPI nor the.
And Sutherland is a very of our village streets, it's so heavily traveled because of the buses coming and going and the square district, you know, that's that's a biggie kind of for us.
You know, I I definitely find value in putting work into looking at Sutherland long term. I mean, it may be four, five, six years until we prioritize Sutherland. So the next question is all this can also wait, right? Zach, is there anything that needs to happen? Well, we were doing the milling and paving, but I guess what I'm saying is if we're not doing the milling and paving on Sutherland for three, four, five years, we're just pooling the engineering work together in the first part of the contract, right?
Well, so with the watering, that's going to have to go either alongside the road or down through the road and all the cross connections being made to the residences alongside or Sutherland.
You're talking to seventy five Monroe.
Yes.
That's probably maybe done next year, twenty twenty four. Um providing that things keep moving along the way as opposed to. Um so I would assume that we would hopefully be ready to move on Sutherland to.
Now, service. Now, water main, this is at the cost of the developer.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does this involve ripping up the road?
Quite possibly.
So does it involve improving the road and putting it back in the other side?
Yes.
Right? One would assume yes, right? We're not picking up that tab.
They would need to repair what what they damaged as part of the work that they do in the right away. Um but it would be, it would be, you know, stagnant construction. I mean, you you have strips where excavation took place where they fill back in and they patch it.
And they would have to do some amount of this work.
Some.
Right? Well, the school too. There there's also, um the superintendent was was talking at one of the previous board vet meetings about the the work the school is doing along Sutherland. So it seems like we've got a residential development project and the school that are both doing work on Sutherland in the next year.
The the work that they're doing, this that my understanding with the school is that it's the pickleball courts going in. They're taking care of that lower field and they're putting in new tennis courts further over. They're they're taking care of drainage on their property. I don't know. They have nothing to do specifically.
I'm not a part of the school project, so.
They have nothing to do with Sutherland per se.
Okay, I want to check that one because I I think they heard, I I believe what I heard the superintendent say was that he was in communication with the village and and there was something related to um us holding off on a a street project on Sutherland because there needs there.
It might have, not aware of that at all.
Let's talk to him then.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him. It might have involved construction vehicles as well.
Well, construction vehicles I can see, but there is, I have not had any.
Putting off, because we've talked about that before, Tim, putting off Sutherland because of the traffic and uh construction vehicle potential. That was when there were private residences that were doing some work.
Yes.
And they just waited till the destruction of a couple of homes on Sutherland. And so we postponed, knowing that things would be disrupted.
I think the main thing with the water.
It does appear that, yeah. But that's how long we've been talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's it's been a topic just the same as South Street for a long time. Um and it's always been pending on to work that's either going to happen to the water main or the.
Just trying to anticipate.
Yeah. So I mean, South Street is still a priority. It's been a priority for a long time, especially in the curbs.
Excuse me, was that you had a hand up or?
Yeah, I did. Just to jump in here.
Yeah.
Because it really sounds like we're coming down to finance. So my simple solution.
Always.
It's just my simple solution. How hard is it to extricate Sutherland out of the quote? Take care of South and Wood, get the engineering done because we have to do that road. Find out what's going to happen with seventy five and then we touched on this in like three, four months. So we can at least get some engineering going for the project we know needs to happen immediately.
I think that's a good point. Related to that, um I I'd definitely be willing to discuss that. Related to that, um wood is a very short street that's rated here as good. But church and uh let's see, Locust are both fair four.
Wait, wait, you said wood was rated as good?
That's on the inventory on this street. Yeah.
That's what it said. So again, going back to the drainage issues, which we're trying to address. So the drainage issues and also parking on the sidewalk, there's a separation between the sidewalk and the road, you know?
Okay.
So there there's a reason that we're revisiting wood prematurely for a deeper dive into the road.
But that that rating may not take into consideration the drainage component. I suspect that was the surface evaluation.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, what is what is the rating or what does the rating constitute? When when we're.
It's surface.
It's just surface only. It doesn't talk about drainage. It doesn't talk about safety. It doesn't talk about curbs. It doesn't talk about anything. Just surface. That's all it does. So it sounds like we need a more.
I know.
In fact, there's a blank column that says priority, which is not filled out yet.
Yeah, so it sounds like it'd be more than just.
So we need to revisit all this.
I don't think was ever really embraced, um at least in my history with the village. I mean, I've seen it as administrative action that's been taken from time to time. But I've never seen a tremendous amount of thought that's gone into it besides just looking at maybe the surface of the pavement.
Yeah, and so just to give you all a warning, at this point, every road that we're going to be revisiting or you know getting to eventually, um is going to be looked at the same light as South and Sutherland. Shame Place, Locust and Church, those are going to be.
They're in the hopper.
A a very heavy deep dive into these roads. Lincoln and Washington, those are going to be next as well. It's not just surface treatments for any of these roads. We're at a point where we're going to dig that down.
Yeah, in other, that's my that's my takeaway is right now, you guys, is that it's always been surface treatments for quite a long time, to the point where we we're missing windows of actually doing, as you say, that deeper dive.
And even some of the windows that we've found have only gone down, you know, an inch and a half and bringing it back up an inch and a half, which again, I'm really. and bringing it back up an inch and a half, which again, I really still have a problem of bringing the road up with many years of surface treatments, about three eighths of an inch each time that you do in oil and stones and operate it down. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, Jay.
Tim, do you have outstanding contracts with municipalities where you're just doing this work year over year? And rather than as a, you know, each road, we go out to bid and get somebody else, like we're doing with SCANX, do you have relationships with municipalities where we commit to sort of year-over-year funding of roads and improvements? Where it would help on cost, it would help on?
In Monroe County, no.
No, do you have in other counties?
We have a lot of offices, 52 of them, up and down the east coast, big presence down in Albany and down that way. I can't, I, I don't know that for sure.
Does that relationship make sense to even explore?
To me, that's been my bread and butter for 30 years. I was involved in pavement ratings at the city of Rochester, utilizing college students back in the eighties, and rating all the county pavements, utilizing RIT interns, pavement management systems, coming up with, and they're complicated algorithms. This is, you can do visuals, that's one thing. But to have something that takes a severity that cracks, the state DUT has a very detailed one, where you set up a detailed analysis spreadsheet, which tracks all that. And then you can, you can sort it by score, you can flip it around. But the score is not everything, because you, the worst first is the worst way to go. Because you could spend all your money on one road, meanwhile, the other many.
Yeah, so this is part of the challenge, right?
If, if we take, a pavement management system gets to where you wanna be, gives some data to support them. The estimating side of it does need some engineering and some, you can do it at a high level from the capital side. But before you go out and borrow money, you can find out it's not enough or it's too much. You need to, you need to do your homework. And then involves some, both institutional knowledge that Zach brings to the table, as well as field data and some, some hard look at some things, or a little bit more of a deep dive with the SCANX and make sure you know what you're talking about.
Cause I look at something like Southern, and if we pay for the engineering work on Southern, only to have it be, you know, ripped up later, or if we get the SCANX done, what you guys were proposing to be done on the sewer, and we, sewer, and we find out that it's got some structural issues, then all of a sudden, the project's radically different, right?
Which is why, which is why you're always to arrive at, at good style, basic estimated scope that is supported by the village, both in terms of width, you're gonna put a curb joint, make sure you put them narrow, you widen, you don't do that.
Let's do it, let's do it right, you know? Like, if we're gonna do this, rather than the constant layering.
That can be arrived at, and those come at a different cost.
So the approval of the original contract in 93, given that Southern has these open-ended concerns with, right? We're not moving on that right away. There's likely different engineering work that they may be paying for, right, to get it redone, that then we stack on top of, and maybe you come in with them, or you're doing it for both of them and us, right?
We're not working with the water, we're, we're not involved in.
You're not involved in that?
No.
Okay.
Scott told me, that's all I know.
Okay, so then let's go back to the original contract. If we, if we go with the original contract, do we just simply wait for the water main to get done? And then we, and wait to hear from the supervisor, and then we just simply present the work that you're doing as phase one, saying this is what we're going with it? And we don't do anything else, maybe other than the SCANX on the sewer? And the utility mapping perhaps? But rather than doing the whole new design, right, the preliminary design alternatives, which I think is a great idea, it's just not gonna be prioritized in time?
Well, so.
Sure, Jeff, jump in.
In light of, of Southern, with the water main going in there, they're gonna have to dig through the road at some point, which will expose what we're actually working with in terms of the base.
Getting able to see it.
So we're gonna get more anyway.
So yes.
So in the meantime, what we can do is still work on the planning stages of what we want the end results of Southern to be, like what Tim's talking about with the curbing, if we want the curbings to continue up the driveway aprons, like the curbing are. And all the other parts that would go along with slightly rebuilding, cause that's what we're talking about here, this road. And that way, once the water main is in, we have a working plan to go ahead and start the work.
So there's a window of opportunity potentially created by this, but understand that the, the street potentially being dug up for this project only just came to light because the water authority just came back with, with this, with, with the applicant.
Yeah, this is kind of a new dynamic.
This is new, so.
New dynamic on Southern, and we're actually meeting with, with the engineers for the project tomorrow on this very topic, because they submitted this as their last plan for sign-off, and it included other items that were never previously identified. Surprise.
Yeah.
And so the, the new items that are appearing are water services that are coming off of the newly proposed water main. I should just step back and say, the Monroe County Water Authority is requiring the developer to abandon the existing water main in the street and connect all the services to the new water main.
All the residents.
And there are, I believe, seven single-family residences on the east side of Southern, and then there's one service that goes to the school on, on the west side. All of those have to, those are long-side water services, so they have to cross east, west through the pavement, and essentially splice through the pavement every so often. And then, looking at that and looking at the other aspects of the project, our, our discussion tomorrow is gonna be, why don't we make this easier for everyone and just have you replace the main in the street next to the existing water main and cover the services in a much shorter distance and a much easier way? And there's less, less trauma to the street that way. However, the, the, the north-south trench or the water main is gonna cause more damage to Southern Street. So all this, all this translates to the fact that Southern Street may be, by this, we may have more geotechnical, so to speak, information from the excavation that occurs. And it may be, to your point, you know, worthwhile to just kind of pull, pull off on Southern and see how this all comes out tomorrow.
Yeah, it, it's an opportunity for us to have some time to, to breathe and explore different options for this road, because there are some details, I'm sure you have, it's a main boulevard coming through.
It's sensibly used, but, you know, Dorothy, as you said, so we pulled, pulled that out. We know that now some of the dynamics with this on Southern, recent information just changed.
Yeah, no, we, we just got the, the, last, last week, yeah.
So to use the medical analogy, now we have the opportunity for exploratory surgery.
There you go.
We, at the same time, as, as far as following up with the school. Mayor, I appreciate your offer to follow up, but maybe it's better if someone administratively follows up with Zach if necessary with school engineering. So I'm about to propose that method of, of getting information about those projects to come back to the board.
Yeah, any disruption to the road should be brought to our attention.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything about that at all.
Yes, I agree.
Well, usually Jeff Pierce is pretty enthused with stuff like that, I'd agree.
Do we need a motion, or can we just say the word?
No, it's just a direction.
Okay.
Yes, I'll give, give you directions to do that.
So, Tim, hearing everything I'm hearing now.
Thanks, Zach.
I know we voted on the 93, and it was a really, you know, appreciate the feedback. Where, how would you like to proceed with modifying this contract for our updated approval, I think? Cause it sounds like we all wanna move forward on Southern and get that thing started as soon as possible.
So you, so the revision, and I'm not gonna do that right here.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We have it broken down by road, we did a cost, that's a very high level, where you have project managers, junior engineers, surveyors, how much survey is out there? You have to pay for railing weight traits for the New York State Department of Labor, for field survey people. We've got that all mapped out by task in an estimated number of hours, and that's a broad brush, so to speak. So we do have that by road. We can rebundle that and focus just on preliminary final design for Wood and South, including all the handicap ramp work, which probably only one of them, I think there was either 13 or 12 of 15 were all on South.
Yep.
And there was some talk about smoking somewhere around, but.
I, I think that's on the right track. Just a, a really quick question. It sounds like the main concern with wood is about drainage coming off of South. Yet the surface of South, based on our scale here, is actually better than some of the surrounding roads. Does it, is there any other way to address the drainage without, with spending less money and, and doing less of the road surface?
Well, I, I would, I would say that the drainage on wood is not really related to the streets to which it connects. It's related to the tree lawn areas and the front yards that are, that are really affected. It's very concerning ponding, so it, it, the, the street is the, the drainage conduit, I guess, for the neighborhood.
It's the lowest point.
South is different than that. South has gutters and a better drainage system.
So you're getting the water from wood down to South, essentially?
Yeah, my South, well, wood goes downhill.
Yeah.
So, but it, the South Street drainage is being captured by the gutters.
Yeah.
There's, really, it's working pretty well. If we don't drop the grade, if we don't drop the elevation of wood down off the top of one head, at the point of Florida, at least, we're gonna keep experiencing more ponding. Zach has to go out and try to get the catch basins to work, revise the ads in Bayville here, push the drainage over in that direction. But as you were saying, like we suspected about, we, we, we borrow Peter and pay Paul type of thing. We, we've got an action/reaction type of thing happening where we fix a problem here, only to create one over there, yeah.
So, so moving forward, what is the process? Where, where are we?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if, if the current work that we're looking at on wood is the most cost-effective way of addressing the drainage issues? It sounds like it is, there's nothing that, I mean, we can't just build the gutters, right?
There are no, there are no gutters.
There's nothing.
You can put catch basins in various locations to try to capture that water, but now you have 50 pergrations through the road surface, which always.
Okay, all right, that's fine, I, I just wanna make sure that we're going down the right.
Just one other thing that I did want to bring up in terms of South and Wood is also addressing some of the issues that we've been having with traffic and speeding. That would be the time to start considering any changes that would be made to that road to.
Like speed bumps to me, on South?
Well, before, we were looking at the possibility of, uh, speed bumps with cutouts that would allow the wheelbase of emergency service vehicles to be able to get through there without any restrictions. Or different paint schemes, three-way stop at a wooden fountain, or I'm sorry, uh, South and Fountain.
South and.
And also relocating a crosswalk at Wood and Locust.
And that was already contemplated, did you?
In the original.
Well, the, the fee included, there was the report that we got a copy of.
Yeah, that was, that was SRF at the time.
There was an SRF report done, taking a look at those recommendations.
That's part of our active transportation.
What out of them could be incorporated into this particular project. We can propose them, that doesn't mean people will like them. So that included presentations to the board and others to get some buy-in of that before we actually include it into the project. So included in, in the scope was the evaluation of those opportunities, because that's what they are. Identifying which ones could be incorporated and at what cost. Pretty much low cost, these were not high-end treatments. We were focusing particularly on paint scheme and pavement marking type things, which are limited in their effectiveness, let's be honest. But at the same time, you take the opportunity of the project to make some improvements, and make those improvements, put them apart, but we also wanna have people buy into that. And not just, we put something on there and then no one likes it, and we have spent money to create more problems.
Speed bumps and bump, right, mate?
That's a whole other discussion.
So then, do we need to make a motion, or, Tim, are you just gonna come back to us?
I don't think we need a motion as much as, I think, you know, that, my understanding is that you're gonna just revisit based on the discussion that we had and.
Yeah.
Just revise and bring it back.
So what we approved last time is basically non-avoidant, until we.
The money was approved.
It's, it's going to be amended, is that the way we should look at it? It's going to be amended, what we have agreed to.
Okay.
I think the goal long-term is to find a partner over many things, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we could do anything, that would be nice. And I mean, we're not trying to move forward with a long-term contract here, but once we get some long-term planning done, we start lining up roads, and we start thinking about costs, and how do we pay for it?
And we can't present it to one person until we have our plan.
There's a persistency of services that we're gonna need. And while this might be backing off, I wouldn't necessarily take it to, you know, mean that.
I think what the SCANX contract we had, which is, which is a long-term renewable contract, I think, engaging a firm like Tim's, not only for what we're doing here, but for social projects and using them advisory, or the master plan on the street, shall we say, I think that's an excellent idea, to have a renewable contract with them.
And hopefully a consideration that comes with it.
Right. And you can then win a way in, so to speak, and everything you have to, you have a bit of a initial to get your arms around these type of, of all the roads you got, the lengths, the width, pavement areas, sidewalks.
Right, and what is this surface?
And that, periodic updates to that, where you're actually gonna look at them, rescore them, keep the data. Data's only as good as it goes bad quick.
Or the idea of taking those things and literating across the different streets as they come along, but knowing that you're working towards a complete project.
And there's a couple, a couple things I'd like to speak to as well, because the first, it was two years ago, we started to do the, build the database of what is underneath the streets, you know? So that had never really been done. So this, this all dovetails together with really knowing what's out there, not just looking at the road surface, whether it's good or fair or poor, but what's also underneath as well, if we're gonna be doing these projects. The other thing too, that I really like about this is, as a village, you kind of have to be ready to pounce, you know, for funding, like when it's available, to go after some money if we wanna get grants or whatever. So having something like this mapped out, then we say, oh, yep, we're ready, you know, we understand, you know, next up is Shane, or next up is, you know, whatever road, and so can help us seek funding.
I have to also think that Tim and his firm can provide us with guidance on various financial grants that are payable, that we may not hear through our connections, but they may hear through their connections.
Another good point, absolutely.
I mean, the GTC through the EWP, Unified Planning and Work Program, that provides money to all municipalities throughout the seven-county region for planning studies. That could be for pedestrians, it could be for parking study, it could be for, it could be for pavement management. It's been used for guide rail upgrades and inventories of hundreds of miles of guide rails in the county to put planning under very standard deficiencies, things, so that, it's, it's actually offered every year.
Yeah.
They put out, they put the EWP out, you can apply, requests are rated.
Yeah, it's coming out.
Awards are made, and it's administered through the JSC Transportation Council.
Yeah, all right.
I think maybe being advisory to us, that sort of, those, those opportunities is, is something you bring to the table would be very beneficial to us.
I think it's all good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, understand the action plan, everybody?
Yeah.
You're gonna circle back?
Yeah, well, Tom will probably be responding with a little bit, but the volume will give him the breakdown. Okay. Resubmit for the two streets.
Yeah.
Final, yeah, and we'll, we'll know more about Southern for tomorrow, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that's breaking news.
You're just, that's just you, right? I'm sorry, we're not, I mean.
No, but, you're very. The engineers and stuff here.
Well, we'll keep you advised, because it was directly related to our presentation.
Right.
Actually, Scott, while you're here, just one other really quick item, if I may. Jeff had mentioned that it would be good to have the, the arboretum, the boundaries that we decided on, on a map for the development, we discussed that too.
Right.
I forgot to bring it up in the other meeting the other day. I just wanted to, I don't know how you'd like to proceed on that. We can get board approval, if you wanna come back to us with a quote, or I, I don't know how to.
To do a map of the configuration that, that we described legally.
On the survey that you did, so we've got a piece of paper and finished all.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, I don't know, I'd just, I'd just do it hourly. I would estimate somewhere around $400 or something like that.
That's under the, the amount that we really need approval for.
It is.
I can approve.
She can approve.
Does anybody have dragged any?
Okay, no, we need it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your expertise, it's really helpful.
Well, that's a lot of roads.
Maybe we could use like, well, you know, I've never spoken.
And roads, yeah.
Oh, the road things.
Yeah.
Huge.
Well, I started to draw a picture, and it scares me. It's the year after year, the cost of roads, like, you know?
But see, once, once we do a.
We're pretty gone.
And, no.
And, and then just spread it out.
We are, I know, this is really where we are. It's overwhelming. Okay, next up, consider.
I'm sorry, Scanex, I was answering.
He's chiming in, yes.
He's trying to move us along.
I know. Uh, extension of the Scanex contract, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, talked to the guys at Scanex, um, and they are willing to honor the pricing that they've given us for last year's contract this year, so it's pleased to be just a renewal. I think, um, that's all.
And they actually, they, they came in at the same, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The same pricing.
Same price, which is great.
I know.
You know, and they've done a lot of work with this though. I mean, I think there's a good, there's a good working relationship.
Yeah, um, and then I think, you know, if the, uh, us allowing the talent to piggyback off of the contract as well, it helps to sweeten it.
Yes, 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 yes.
That was on the C I Q.
Do you just need a motion to approve?
Yeah, I sent out a form to everybody. I'm sorry, I didn't print it. I shouldn't have thought. Um, I just need authorization for the mayor to go ahead.
Yeah, it's just that we need to sign the extension.
Is that essentially the same legal contract that we had in place before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah.
There's no change.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I make a motion to, uh, approve the extension of the, the Scanex contract?
I'll second.
Go ahead, please.
Trusty Lickin?
Aye.
Trusty Coe?
Hi.
Trusty Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion yes.
Excellent.
Okay, yeah, no, that's all good.
Right. Thanks, Zach.
Okay, we're cruising now.
Okay, should we grab Lily?
Yeah, Lily.
Did you just go to the bathroom?
No, she, yeah, confused herself.
For Scanex.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
She avoids us.
Okay, we sent out lots of information and just when you thought there was no more, no more information, we created more. So what we did is kind of combined down some of the needs and wants, not, well, needs. Not gonna even use the word want, because want's not a window here, so. You, and from you, and then coming. There you go. This is kind of giving a priority scale to the projects, everything that we've talked about through budget and everything that should be taken into consideration when we're doing them all that year.
All the number ones.
Yeah, we got a couple of fours, I think.
Yeah.
So just thinking about, you know, how to go about this, things that I would be to be useful and helpful. So we've got this inventory schedule, right, of vehicles that are on a method of delivery that's kind of hard to kind of easily pick up on, right?
Yeah.
And it might be nice, as we think about all these different things, to have, like we have here, right, a line of, a line of everything that's, that we need over time, that's long-term capital spending, right? Current value, right, or state of decay or, like, wherever it's at. So if it's a retaining wall, right, urgent need or something, or like brand new, or the trust, right? So have a, and this would be for everything, be it Village Hall, the DPW. So you, you say what you have, you say the condition of it, right? You say when you think we should be replacing it, bless you, you know, what year we should replace it and what the current cost is. And then what we can do by having all those years of, so right now you have priorities that, for example, the planner, in looking at this, I don't know if the current planner has two more years of life or seven more years of life or needs to be done now, right? But there's certainly some things that we don't need to replace for a little while. So while I like the priority, because it lets me know the things that are roughly shared of equal value or equal priority, it'd be really great to see, um, the year of need and then like a worst-case range. So for example, the dump truck, 2001, it's priority. Will that last till 2024 through '27? Or is '24, '25, it's gotta be, we got a good truck, or is it '23, right? So some of these things may have a little bit of a range, and this is true in the office. It's true with Village Hall. It's true when we think about the HVAC. And so everybody's gonna have a different perspective on that, but I think for us, at least for me, this isn't work that I can do. I kind of have to ask you for it, and then we have to kind of stack them up and then have this conversation, because right now, I don't think I have enough information to, to, to quickly assess in my mind, to make sense of it.
You need to flesh it out.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm hearing. I, I think that's a good idea too.
Well, I also think that the, the rating scale was done by other people besides us. So, you know, with your expertise, obviously you're telling us that this priority is up there, but we just need to know some background, why it's up there.
Again, fleshing it out, more detail.
Just a little more information so that we can.
Oh, I think the equipment and the vehicles, they have a schedule.
Yep.
Okay, the Village Hall has never had a schedule.
Right.
It didn't even have a maintenance budget line for like 10 years ago, so it does, but, you know, it's never been, it's always been repaired as it broke.
Yeah, it was pro, reacted.
There was never that schedule established, so we need to establish it.
Right.
Part of the problem is I don't know the whole history of the building, given I've been here 10 years. I only know what we've repaired in the last 10 years, so it's very hard to come up with a schedule. So I need to go through minutes and establish it. That's my work.
And Steve can help with that too.
Right.
Steve's very good at that. And then also we have the report that Bureau did 22 years ago.
Right, and we're hoping to get.
So we can start to reconstruct.
Yes, exactly. So we're working on it. I think that's.
I, I like this idea a lot, because then it becomes a working document.
Yes.
You know, as we go forward, I like this.
I, I wanna just stack up all these costs and then take these sliding scales of financing. So, you know, the truck, it's a 10-year financing. Okay, when do we have to buy it? Worst case, 2005. And so all of a sudden what you have is you have a single sheet or maybe multiple sheets of a lot of, a whole lot of horizontal lines that come with dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Kind of like this one. Yeah, kind of like that. This is from the New York State Capitol.
Cut off, cut off a little bit.
And then.
Well, this is the New York State Capitol, we've got it's a multi-year Capitol.
Right, right.
We'll see that template. And, and so then at the bottom of all these years, we have dollar amounts, and then we have to figure out how to find.
And then what also, because there are other moving parts, I mean, we're looking at the, you know, X, Y to Z, there's other moving parts. For example, the timeframe to sell the used truck at auction. You know, there's other things that kick in, that Zach, Zach, you've been on that. That is so great, because it, it factors into the schedule of the optimal time to say, oh, yeah, right now. Like, right now the market is completely hot on used stuff, because no one can get anything.
Right.
You know?
Right.
So you, you kind of wanna factor that in, you know, so that should be yet another component, you know, when we look at that.
I mean, very specifically what we're working towards, um, we've, we've got some of the asset inventory. We've got that for vehicles, and that's going back to Frank Alucia's work. I think that was something that, I don't know if he started it, but I, I know he, he did some climate a lot. The, uh, we've got something for, for streets and roads. We've got an inventory there. Those are the kind of first couple of dependencies in, in this book on multi-year capital planning. What we're really looking for is, as Dave was mentioning, um, the, so we've got an equipment repair and maintenance, uh, maintenance schedule. Um, I think we need to extend that to the buildings.
Oh, absolutely. I think we're all in agreement. I think, you know, I think that, yeah, we crossed the bridge on that.
Pretty much. I think the Village has, should have something to jazz with it and the need for.
Right, and then going down to the, but ultimately what we really need to do is like, what are the projects in the next five years, right? And, and then we can take that back to the, the level of the financing, as, as Dave was saying. And there's already a template for this and.
Yeah, so it's derivative, the cost of financing is derivative of everything that we should, you should go back and do, yeah.
I, I was just gonna say, if every million is paid in last 20 years, right? And we've got 40 streets and you're doing two streets on average or some distance of streets every year, right? That's just gotta get worked into the budget.
So the thing that's tripped us up is not being able to follow a schedule, so now we have.
Right.
So, and so now is the opportunity to, going forward, this is, this is where we start. It's, it's the starting point.
The fact that we have this conversation about forward planning, instead of being reactive as we have been for so long, is just a massive step forward.
Yes.
Yes.
And there's a couple of, I, I think that, um, doing this voluntarily and, and kind of in a little bit of an ad hoc way, as, as we're doing right now, as we step forward, there is, um, uh, in, in GML 99, section 99G, they talk about a capital program where basically we adopt a resolution and it forces us to do this, and it forces it to be a part of every year's budget. Um, we might wanna consider something like that.
I, I think, let's see, let's see the product, right?
Yeah, let's start looking.
Let's complete the product.
Right.
And then let's see if we want to adopt the requirement. But I think we should do the work as though we may adopt the requirement, because that solves, you know, a lot of this is about.
We should do whether or not it's required.
Yeah, right.
Yes, or I'm.
I mean, skipping things that we, like, because you don't wanna be stuck. Right now, for example, on the DPW infrastructure, I'm looking at, you know, four, five, six roads. We gotta load more.
Yep.
And I don't know when they need to be done. I don't know if that's five years, seven, eight years. And so if we start floating bonds for roads and we're only floating bonds for five roads, and then five years from now, we've got five other roads, but those bonds aren't paid for 20. I mean, you can stack a few bonds on top of each other and all of a sudden you're at a million bucks and you're thinking, that's 100% tax increase. How does that work out? If we're providing the same level of services that we're providing now, right? Nobody wants to do that, but what we do need to do is, is put in the way, I think, just a little bit. We gotta put in the work to say, here's what we need, here's what we're working towards. And we have to even think about, you know, where's our tax base going? Where's our assessments going? And how are we gonna get all that done? And we gotta build up to it sometimes, right?
So the action item then, really, I'm liking, let's circle back, you got your departments, okay? Circle back, really flesh this out, those, can you get them the categories and everything?
I think your categories are fine, but I would go farther.
I guess the question is, because before we revamp the wheel, are we good with the schedules for the vehicle and the equipment that already are established, or do you want those revamped?
You mean these schedules?
Not those. Those are from the assurance company that.
You mean the.
Like, Trusty Lickin requested I include. Those are just, those come from the assurance company. Those schedules have been established and been used for the DPW for many years. The question is, are we revamping that to a new format?
With a, with a.
Because Village Hall doesn't exist. I can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
So to, to me, this is a, a great start. It's the inventory. And what we need to do is go from the inventory to what are we planning this year? What are we planning next year? Um, because we've gotta make these decisions about how much money we're, we're gonna take on in, in debt. And in fact, we shouldn't take on too much as, as a percentage of our income, right? Because that would be considered unhealthy by the Comptroller and hopefully this board as well.
And the treasurer.
Yeah.
Yeah, the treasurer.
Yeah, we do a treasurer there. There we go.
So we, we need to, you know, and this is what the Comptroller's Guide said, which is basically based on GML 99, section G, um, as, as far as the capital program. It says, go from the inventory to the itemized yearly list of, of things that we plan to do.
Okay.
So I can't read this, it's a little small.
Oh, yes, terrible. I need a 99 list.
That's okay, thank you. Uh, but what I would like to do is, is build this out a, a little longer, right? In terms of roads and infrastructure, uh, maybe Village Hall, there's some additional things, longer-term, um, capital maintenance requirements that we may need. Try to put, where are we today? What's the duration of that asset? What's an optimal replacement date, right? And what's the worst case?
Can I propose a just slightly different?
Mm-hmm.
Um, a breakdown of, uh, what needs to be replaced per the year. So 2024, what's gonna be on the schedule and all things from vehicles, roads, um, everything that we can plan for that, you know, is, is predictable.
And then like roll up by year?
Yeah, so 25, it would be a different.
That means now.
Because, I mean, technically, anything can get into a spreadsheet, you know?
Yeah.
Think of that as a per year, but again, what I'd like, if it's. It would just be a little easier to comprehend that.
Sure.
We have so many, um, different assets per schedule.
Tell us where we are now. So for example, the dump truck. Here is, we want a dump truck. It's a priority. It's a quarter million dollars.
Yeah.
Well, what's the value of the 2001 dump truck? What's the potential longest lifespan it has? Because if we start prioritizing this stuff, and the dump truck can last till 2027, but the truck.
So here's, all right, just, uh, uh, just so everybody's in know right now, um, yeah, it is on the schedules, I believe.
We can format it though in a way that I think, I know we're supposed to really see the flow of how.
Yeah, your schedule is, is kind of designed around us who are familiar with what we're looking at versus, you know, the, not the same.
No, I think we're saying the same thing different.
Yeah, um, the, um, there's, there's a formula of, of term for, especially for vehicles along, you know, with the roads, but it's a little bit different. Um, we get, we get discounts, being a municipality towards the purchase of vehicles. And turning them over in a specific amount of time, being like six to eight years for pickups on the smaller vehicles, um, it's, it's almost a wash and.
We can factor that in though. I see where you're going with that.
We wanna get in it.
Yeah, we wanna.
So it would be showing through, the, the tough thing about that is, is there, there's no marketplace to go to. It's not like going out and looking at a hot, a cool, you know, maybe a set of.
Yeah, right.
It's, it's, there's a pretty wide range that we would have to see other vehicles that are selling for.
Sure. Now, why don't we, why don't we, you take a stab at it? Let's get that draft, draft.
Yeah, I just want that to be understood.
We're getting to 530. I think, I think, I think this is great. I think this is really good.
Yeah, this is really good. Um, I think that Zach, just kind of looking at the, the D and E worksheet here might be helpful. D is basically what's the request this year, it's close to this with the priority list.
Okay.
Um, and we can even talk about recommended source of funding and, and that sort of thing. Um, and then look at that as a board. Then we wanna kind of go five years out and see what's in, um, what's in the list for about five years out, along which year do we think it should be done? So that's, um, if you just go down here, there's an example of that in appendix E. Um, you know, just a one-page sample worksheet. And based on that, we're gonna see how much money we need for all this stuff, because there's some stuff on here.
Everything's derivative, really.
I'm, I'm looking at like the Ford F50 Lightning for a hundred grand. And to be really honest, you know, I think that we have to, based on all the work that we're needing to do, um, we're gonna have to look at the amount of debt we can actually take on realistically without being irresponsible. And based on that, we might need to pare back on, on some points, the smaller costs.
I, I wanna take, so I wanna take a spreadsheet, be able to type in for everything, 2024, 25, 26, and have it change my bottom line. I wanna be able to change my financing, 15-year, 20-year, 10-year, 5-year, right? And have it change my financing. So then over the next five, 10, 15 years, I see this flow of costs and when we're picking up the debt, if any at, right? Or we can work it into the budget. And so I think all this is good.
Okay, I'm sorry I'm rushing people a little bit, but I think we're clear on this. I think this is a solid way to go, and it gives us completely, I think, the underpinnings of everything we need going forward. So this is great.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anything else on this? Because I know we have, uh, what's next?
When are we talking about, just what are the next steps concrete that comes about?
They're gonna, they're gonna set up these spreadsheets. We're gonna, you're gonna do, you're gonna start from zero, you know?
I gotta start from here.
Right.
It doesn't exist. Zach doesn't, it doesn't exist for the DPW buildings.
And then why don't you?
It's a little off, I suppose.
Sure, sure, but why don't, why don't we do this? So when you start to get the draft, draft, we can circle back to the board, you know, send it out, just, this is kind of where, where we, we need to go. Just so it is like.
You know, honestly, since, and just, I know this is backwards, you know what you wanna see on a spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm.
If you can give me the template and we can fill it in, that might be easier.
Yeah, just, just like some of our.
If I may, I'll send the page on Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine.
For a starting point to get us going.
Can I make a request? Can we keep this long-term planning? Two special long-term planning meetings. Don't mix this in with our general agenda for.
Okay, I was requested to have these items on.
No, 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 I'm saying for future.
No, I understand.
Well, this is just getting us started.
But I'm just saying, as we work on this long-term capital plan, I think that. I think that we need separate, outside of our regular agenda meetings, that just devote just to this.
I'm good with that, but that's on the board. We know what's going to get done.
Tick tock, love that. Okay. Moving forward, review of office layout.
This goes back to the barrow that everybody hesitated on the other night because we were exhausted after five hours. Now, this is important. I know everybody got a little nervous when they said putting up desks and furniture. We're not talking about furniture. What we're talking about were the placement of items, where it should be with the hall. Totally. Because we're taking, understand, we're taking everything out, we're putting rug in. It needs to all go back.
Uncable it, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on.
It's important to understand where's the best place to put it. Because we have the weight concerns and what the gentleman's going to do when he comes in and looks at the building for things. He's going to make some recommendations. We need to go further. Basically, what I'm saying is, while we have it all out, let's find out where we should put it back.
This was something that you were saying was initiated a while back.
Oh yeah, Bob and I talked about this years ago. Because understand, layout in the other room is not great, you know.
But you're also dealing with sensitive matters sometimes.
My problem is, and when you see privacy, I need a little more privacy. Because I deal with HR, there's other issues. Sometimes the mayor needs to speak to me, I could go to the mayor's office. But if I'm dealing with Zach, he needs to talk to me about appointment manners. The minute I get out of my chair and go in the mayor's office and shut the door, everybody goes, oh, somebody's in charge. Something's going on. You don't want that culture. You want it to be, he can walk into wherever I am and we can have a conversation with no issues. I'm not asking for a new office. What I'm asking for is a little bit more privacy. That's it. And if Jennifer can come in and take a look at the building and the proper way to lay it out, that's what we're asking. While we have everything out, that's the time to make sure we're putting it back appropriately and keeping the weights where it should be and everything laid out. That's all we're saying. It's like building the road. We need a plan.
So we're asking for $3,600 here?
That's not what I'm asking for, just to have Jennifer come in and lay it out while we're doing all of this.
Right, the pricing is $3,600.
Correct.
For architecture.
So let me just, again, I'm going to use this. So basically, when you own a house, right, and you want to rearrange things, or you hire a designer, right? You hire, yes, with this, this is a designer. Some people that can't afford to hire a designer, they figure it out themselves. So my question is, where's the happy medium? I mean, do we have to spend $3,600 on a designer to come in here? Or is there ways that we can think about how can we manage this without spending $3,600? I just think it's a lot of money.
Actually, I'd say, no, it's not a lot of money. It's a big building. And it's important to the, not just the history, but the structure itself.
Well, and you're serving an entire municipality.
Because you're talking historic building. I want to make sure where we put anything.
Right.
Because the problem is, we willy-nilly put stuff all over the place upstairs and we could have compromised the structure. I don't think we want to be in that position.
Structural compromise, I get that. Like, you know, the height, the bulk.
It's in conjunction. It's in conjunction of that. We can't grow not knowing how we can use the building without having a good survey, without having the structural engineer review, plus having Jennifer lay it out the way it should be. It kind of goes hand in hand. It's, it's a feat to make sure we don't do future damage that costs us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So this is just going to be, she's going to come, they're going to come in and they're going to give you, give us a plan as to how we should.
Where you should lay this out, how this should be, work together with the structural engineer.
This is structural as well as visual.
Visual, making sure it looks appropriate. We want to use the building to its fullest content. I don't have a layout to look in there. I can't say this is the best place for it. Because right now, it doesn't work. So we really need to take a good look and have it done. And while we move the furniture out, while we're laying the rug, that's the time to do it. Why do it after you do it? Then you got to rerun cable and put holes in the new rug.
So once they come back with a plan, is that something that we look at before we move forward? Or is this plan basically married?
We can bring, we can bring them to you. But I need something.
Because the plan's a process, right? They're going to give us, they're going to give us an estimate of what this would cost.
Well, they might, she might say, well, we'll suggest some paneling, this and that. But the board doesn't go forth with that unless they choose. This is just for.
The evaluation and the design.
And we have the engineering and, you know. And also, you know, Bureau is so familiar with the building because they, you know, they know the history that, you know, that's their bailiwick. And this is, this was a library. And so what you're dealing with is something that's rapidly reused.
The building is still a library.
Yeah.
We're trying to make it work for an office. It's still a library. And I think, you know, visually, you come in, you're like, oh, it's great. But you don't, and I'm not trying to be mean or.
We don't work here.
You don't work here. You don't deal with the problems we're dealing with. So to have really someone else come in and lay it out appropriately, that's a professional, is a professional for a historic building.
Well, that's the thing. I just wouldn't want a designer to come in. I mean, in other words.
That's what I learned yesterday, DPW, no land is this.
So, yeah.
So we've got a couple of things here. We've got the structural item, which I think is probably worth assessing. Even though I'd like to indicate that, you know, we might not be able to afford to even, you know, there's going to be another $400,000, $50,000 to address structural issues if they do find something that we need to work out. That's going to have to be something.
Either way, we need to know.
I think.
It'll be in our plan.
Your home will be repaired or.
If they do find structural damage that we need to.
Sugar, you think, I mean.
I think it's more.
Assess the load, the stuff that's loaded upstairs. If that roof is not designed to handle the load of all those records.
We got to move it.
Yeah, we got to move it.
This is the outside zone. This is just the inside of the office.
This is just inside.
Yeah, this is.
So how?
Only taking a look at the.
The engineer is our, I've already approved the engineer to come in because of the fire damage. We have to know where we put things back in the attic. We need to know the whole building, where we need to put things because it is a historic building. I'm trying to save your asset, is what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to do it appropriately. We have a golden opportunity because we have to clear out to do all the work that needs to be done.
You know, you would mention that we need to close down for about a week. I mean, we'll still be serving the public, but.
Yeah, it would brand the book that you're saving this building and you're putting money into the building. We're talking 3,500. If we put something wrong and it caves in the ceiling, it's going to be a lot more. So we need some instruction.
So the archives are currently out of that area?
No, the archives are not out. Understand, the only thing out right now is everything in the attic and in the abertie. What is up there right now, we already know is not right.
That was identified when they came in to go after the fire. And then the concern was also how things had been stored anyway in that attic. That, you know, sort of, well, there, we'll just put it here because it's all above here. And, you know, this was built in 1855, so it was built in a different way without a lot of reinforcements.
So we don't even put anything, they're still finishing up the repairs, but we don't want to put anything back until we know where we can put it.
I see that as something that's fire related and I think it's worthwhile to look at the structural issues before we do something that might be causing harm. I wouldn't necessarily extend that to a new layout for the downstairs. I think the carpet can be justified as part of the fire damage. I think that other than that, we're looking at lots and lots of costs that we are not going to be able to afford everything on.
Is the carpet replacement fire damage under insurance?
The insurance is covered, but the insurance is going to cover. We had already agreed to replace the carpet in the hall because it's, I'm just going to say it's gross, okay? You can, it's a tripping hazard. It's been for a decade. So it needs to go. It's 30 years old. Come on. I'm just saying, they're giving us a plan so we know where to put things. We also know where appropriate placing for desk and space. It's a necessity.
I don't know. I think it's, I don't, I think it's money well spent going forward as an investment in essentially what is the people's house. We serve the public, you know, this is a municipal building open for everybody. I think this is something that my understanding is that has never been addressed. You know, I just think it's an opportunity.
Me and Bob have had, I had these conversations with Bob, I've had these conversations over the years. Try working in that.
Yeah, come in and work for a decade.
Just a thought. So I agree with the 1,080 on the structural line. You got to do that, right? The rest of it is mostly this room in the front and asking the question, how big is it, right? What are your programs and what do you do in government? Let's sketch some ideas and give you some design work, right? To put the furniture back. Are we buying new furniture?
No.
So it's the same furniture?
Yeah, we're going to have.
It could just be, it could just be taking a look at this and saying, this is a far more efficient way of using what we have and laying it out in a way that serves, helps and supports whoever works here and also serves the public more efficiently.
And then we can start budgeting for those replacements because.
As needed.
Replacement for furniture or whatever.
Yes, the decks that are about to collapse.
Well, so this is where I think, you know, the furniture, when you're going to buy furniture, the sizing of it is always going to be different than what you have now, right? So the placement of furniture is going to be uniquely different than the placement of the furniture that we have now. Isn't that true?
I don't know. I think we're going down a rabbit hole in tick tock. So, I mean, where do we want to go with this? I support this. I think it's money well spent. I think it serves our employees and it serves our community and can improve this area in the building.
You know, furniture and everything is something we need down the road. That's great. It gives us the baseline. But we also need to take a look at the whole layout.
If this is valuable, right, this work, I think it should include the basement.
The basement is an issue because we ran out the basement to the Legion.
I know that.
And until, I think at any point, if we go down there and start saying we want to look at their stuff and their spacing and look at our use, I think it's an insult.
Well, we have a right. It's our building. I mean, we're allowed to.
Until they're ready to give up that.
Let's stand up. I have a question. So you want to include the basement for, talk more about it. Just fill us in.
What I'm suggesting is, this is a real conversation about the building, the use of the space, how much space we have. We have an engineer, I don't know if you've been over to, you know, Steve's desk, but I mean, you got a massive ream of stuff that he's trying to work with on 75 Monroe. He can't spread out to get his work done. You guys are on top of each other. And if you want privacy, it may be a little bit more spaced. Maybe it's a screen. But, you know, privacy screen isn't going to keep people from hearing what you're saying, right?
No, it's not.
So.
It depends on what Barrow would come up with and what that would look like. I'm not, I'm not jumping to any conclusions about that whether it would be effective or not.
What I think is, this part here is money that isn't quite thought out of, in terms of, I think the master plan for the building, for government, for use of all of the space, right? Matters. And we're running out a little bit.
And we're out.
And, and, and a long-term lease in the basement of space that has utility for residents and it has utilities for nonprofit in a very important region, right? So there has to be ways to figure these things out. But it is tough when we have a building that is possibly at.
Max.
Max.
Oh yeah, we are. I think we're also looking at sort of what is the immediacy of the gameliness and of the staff. This, you know, the Legion is here a few, maybe a couple of times a week or whatever that is downstairs. This is used on a daily basis, non-stop, non-stop, absolutely non-stop. So it's a very different use, but I think the need is far greater than for the, you know, what's going on with the Legion. Just to finish my thought. Just, that's all I'm saying. The need here to me is a greater need. I get the system, the whole different, I mean, I get that. But we're here now. We had a fire. We are getting things replaced. Again, I think it's the opportunity to address something that has been a longstanding concern for the entire staff. So, yeah, Lisa.
I had the opportunity to go visit DPW. Okay. So if we're talking about, you know, workspace, we all need to go see the DPW. I mean, they don't even have a bathroom that's not next to the table they eat at. So we got to put things in perspective. And that's why we go back to this long-term plan. I mean, we've got to look at our whole village as a whole and see where we need to spend money. I mean, believe me, if we had unlimited money, I'd go for it. But there's places that I think that we're not acknowledging, that we may need to spend money on. And I don't know about a designer coming into a building that, and I don't even know why we're even painting these walls. I mean, these walls are gorgeous. I don't even know why we're spending the money on these walls.
They're still, we're still getting smoke smell in. The insurance is paying.
And we're not coming, good, all right, that's good.
That's just sale.
So all I'm saying is, I just think that we're spending, I'm just feeling so uncomfortable. Like I said, every time I turn around, we're spending money, money, money. And I, I think we need to step back for a second and look at the big picture. We're still, we're still in the process, we're still in the habit of band-aiding. Okay, now we're going to band-aid this just because we're doing the rug. We're going to now take this whole thing apart? I mean, yes, it's a great opportunity, but do we have the money? You know, there's always gravity. It's like pulling up Southernland, you know, that's great. Let's snake out the whole thing. Let's replace all the drainage. Do we have the money? It all comes back down to, we've got to look at the big picture.
You do know DPW is getting a new bathroom facility, don't you?
You do know that?
So my question is this, and I'll conclude with this, right? These items that we have here, aside from the structural engineering evaluation, we can make that decision at any time. I know when you're putting the buildings or the furniture back, this furniture is portable. We can lift it up, we can move it, we can get six guys and push it around. Now, it comes with some cords and some other things, so.
No, it comes with the desk when they get moved. And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm very well, I put in desk into last year's budget, we cut it. I'm very concerned when we move these desks for the rug, and I've said this, they're just going to fall apart. They're taped, they're, they've been moved and the only, there's only, the desk guy's certainly is solid. The desk Steve's at will never be destroyed. It'd take a bomb. But the other two, they're going to fall right apart and I am very concerned. So we'll tape and duct. I'm withdrawing this for right now because I really don't want to go down this, I'm getting frustrated. And I understand all the needs. I do look at the DPW and I give every dollar to give them a bathroom for a while. I'm not asking for this because it's a want. I'm asking because it's a need and we're in there.
And I think what's going to happen here, so this doesn't include the furniture replacement, that when we take out, it breaks down. So going back to the idea that this is the beginning of a bigger cost that needs to be prioritized. That I don't want to do schematic designs and sketches without the understanding that I'm also paying for new furniture. That can also be of different designs and schematics, right, and sizes. So let's commit to the project for what it's really going to cost rather than do the design and then buy the furniture to fit.
Okay, so the action item is the engineering.
The action item is what is there.
Okay.
Okay, can we get the bill paid?
Yeah, let's do that.
Motion to approve the bill for the engineering at 1,000.
Well, we're talking about.
That I already.
We're good. We're actually on to item number five. Can I just report?
Sorry.
Yep, no, I put the structural, it had to be done. Part of five.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill pay as presented.
One call please.
Okay, trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Lanthea.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkit.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passed. Okay, as I informed the board in the beginning of the meeting, the May financials are coming. I'm going to request a special meeting on July 6th. I need to have everything to the accountant prior to July 7th to get everything done for the AUD. As I said, we had a problem with the Lamson law book and there's two revenue items. One is the sewer billing and mortgage tax. I have to accrue. I don't have the amount for the mortgage tax. It's not going to come out yet. I'm trying, I'm getting way ahead of myself, I guess. And sewer bills are being prepared now. Even though they're prepared now, they're for services provided in last budget year. So they go back to the revenue for the last budget year. So until Brooklyn runs the numbers, I don't have the total tally. So we're like.
So that's the update. Okay.
For being done for our AUD.
Okay.
Coming back to the Bureau consulting thing that we just decided to pass on. Put it in here as part of the office furniture, just add it to office furniture and design. And then jack the price up to 20,000 instead of 15,000, right?
Okay. Okay. And then anything else from your.
I'm going on vacation currently and hopefully next Monday. Good for you. Going through July 5th, I'll be back on 6th. So there you go. Just so the board knows, on a personal note, my husband's seeing a surgeon on July 5th. I might be out again for extended periods depending on the surgery.
All right. We hope it all goes well.
Yep.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I just had a couple of things that I wanted to mention quickly. I did speak with Jim Wick from Friends of the Arboretum. We had talked about some of the items related to the invasive removal. And I did provide him with a map of the Metz and Bount surface, so we know roughly where the boundaries are. He was just going to go in with some other folks in their group to mark some of the invasive plants. So some of the Alanthus trees primarily, he thought maybe 15 to 20 of them. So just wanted to let people know that that was in the works. I think we talked about a holiday pay, a possible holiday pay action item in the last meeting. I can't remember if that was in an executive session or the open meeting.
I think it was in an executive session.
Okay. I mean, that should basically be talked about in an open meeting since it's related to policy. And so I think it's fair to talk about here. I don't have that HR information on my computer. So I had mentioned that perhaps I could help to carry this out. But I would need some kind of a summary of, I'm happy to help out with the spreadsheet, but I need some information first.
Okay, if you can, you know me, what you're looking for, because.
I thought it was just.